Anyone else?
I don't think so, Polly.
No? Okay. So let's call this meeting to order at 6:01. Could everyone please rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up is our food services policy. It appears like a lot of work has been done on this.
Well, I think we're good. I'm going between two screens, sorry.
Yep.
I think this, thank you. I believe we already have a policy. Could someone just scroll all the way down? Carolyn, am I right? Is this the one that was supposed to be an exemplar?
This is our current existing policy.
Oh, okay, good, because I know we had discussions yesterday about which one was going up and so on and so forth. All right, this policy is all well and good, and I think we don't really need to touch it, except and I'll ask Sean about this, to reference our transfer policy. Is that language that we need to, that the school committee should vote on if we're just referencing within this?
Can you identify the language?
Yeah, Sean, I think this came up when the transfer policy was mentioned. And the question came up as to if someone were transferring out of the district and they were carrying a negative lunch balance, how do we capture that before they leave? And it was pointed out by Lori at the last meeting that the procedure for that is outlined in the food services account policy. So I believe that the reference Lori's referring to is the transfer policy should reference the food service account as a means to collect any lunch debt prior to a student transferring out of the district.
Right, and the policy subcommittee chair, when we were looking at the transfer policy, said, oh, you know, what do we have in that language for outstanding lunch balances to reconcile those accounts? And rather than reinvent the wheel, you know, we already have the food services account policy in section 2000 that spells that out. So if we're just referring, yeah, if we're just doing a cross-reference, it's a question I've always had as a librarian. If we're doing a cross-reference, do we need a first read, a second read?
I mean, I think it's really up to the school committee. If it is a minor change, I don't think you need to, unless the school committee has adopted some sort of rules which make this very formal, which I'm not aware of. If it's a minor change, I mean, I have in the past have experienced where such minor changes can just be brought forward for final adoption because it's not changing any of the substance of the policy. It's just simply cross-referencing, or perhaps it's small edits such as grammatical punctuation, things of that nature, that maybe you just want to have a vote on the policy to say that it's been adopted with whatever those changes are, but they're really not of great substance or debate. It's just simply, we're making this change to, in this case, more streamline our policies to make them more cohesive overall.
Thank you so much. That's exactly where we were going.
So the reference should really be in the transfer policy, not in the food service account policy, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you could cross-reference, but yes, definitely in the transfer.
All right, so there's nothing that needs to be cross-referenced in this food service account?
No.
Okay.
So the transfer policy is not on the agenda tonight, is it? No.
Well, because it's only a cross-reference. It's not really a change or emendation. And that's why we brought that to Sean. It's not quite...
Okay, but so that we make sure that we reference it in the transfer policy? Should we just charge Mariah with that now so that we make sure it gets done?
Perfect.
Leave it at that? Yep.
Yep, perfect. I think we're going to come across...
And another thing, at the last meeting, John McNamee was asked to provide an exemplar, an example of this policy from another district, which he did, and it's attached to the agenda. Just as a point of follow-through, that John did provide that. And if the policy committee wanted to quickly look through, I did just a real quick, and they're very similar.
Absolutely. And I think if you look at the adoption date, the entire state was tweaking their policies a few years ago based on the horrible practice of students being given a cheese sandwich if their parents hadn't, or guardians hadn't reconciled their accounts. So it's pretty much the same language. But it's like anything else. Once, you know, once we take a thread and start looking at one policy, you know, we find others that that policy should refer to, so on and so forth. So...
And I just want to say, Polly, that we do not, you know, in this exemplar that John McNamee provided, it does have language that states points at which students aren't allowed to charge. We always feed kids. We always feed them.
Absolutely.
Of, you know, when a child comes to the register with a meal, they eat their meal. I mean, with no eyes batted.
Nope, we reconcile behind the scenes.
Yep, so there's no lunch shaming at all.
So we have the exemplar. Yeah.
Yeah. I wish that was true at high schools. In my office, I usually always have a couple loaves of bread and peanut butter and jelly and some other stuff because there are kids that just can't get lunch.
That's a policy issue.
Yeah, so should we put the transfer policy on next month's agenda just as a reference so that everyone knows what we're up to?
Could be. I mean, I think we made tweaks to other policies in the past where we took district and changed it to department a few times. Ed would probably remember, or Carolyn, or you, Polly, did we push all that through the school committee? Or did we just sort of charge Carolyn with it at the time?
We always pushed it through, like even when we had a change of personnel and we needed to reference, for example, the HR office instead of an individual's name.
I get it.
We always put that on the agenda, just for transparency.
I think if anyone's watching too, it also, you know, brings it to light to them what we're doing and what our policies may be. They might not be aware of it, and it's just a little more, a little more eyes, two more eyes on the policy. So...
Yeah, I like that point of view, absolutely. Air on the side of transparency. Sounds good.
All right. Next up is the school improvement team policy.
Yep, Sonia couldn't make it, but she did say she has no feedback. I looked at it, it looks fine. I think we've already done a first, did we do a first read on that? I think so, yeah.
Yep, or in the second reading.
That one's baking up nicely.
There were no, Mariah, there were no edits that we were waiting for?
The only thing is that I think Sean and John were going to take a look at it, but I think I haven't heard anything.
What policy is this again?
The sit policy.
Oh, okay. All right, no, that hasn't been looked at. So I will write that down right now to make sure it gets done. When is it before the committee?
July 8th is our next school committee regular meeting.
All right, because I know I've already reviewed the restorative practices. I know that was also one that's slated for July 8th. So add that to the list. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Human capital management policy.
All right, HR director.
Okay. So the reason that the two HR policies are on the agenda, the human capital management policy and the personal management system policy, is to incorporate language per the new statute into one of them and also cross-reference where appropriate. So I provided a document where I have identified some proposed language, and then I've suggested where it might be placed. So, for example, I don't know if Mariah can get it up on her screen or not.
Which document would you like up?
The one, it's attached to both agenda items under administrative content, so either one, the proposed language to add to the policies. So the first, okay, so reassignment, layoff, and recall of certified and support staff. I would suggest that this section be added to the human capital management policy. And this policy is on for a second read, so I don't know, Polly, if you want to direct me to add it in as recommended, and then you and Ed can look at the document as a whole prior to the next policy meeting.
Sure. Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah. I hate to just keep Ed out of this discussion because he catches so many little things that are super important. So sure, so if you want to stick that in where you think it goes and then email it to us for a final looksee.
Sure, yeah. And so the sections are this reassignment, layoff, and recall, termination of employment is another one that I thought could just easily slide into the human capital management policy.
Yep.
Then after that, thank you, Mariah, is exit interviews. That fits with someone leaving, so put it in human capital.
Yep.
Right now, there's a section in the personnel management system policy that deals with employee background screening. And in the human capital management policy, there's just something about background checks. So I thought if we added this and kind of made the section in the human capital management policy more robust, make it really meaningful with language, you know, here, and then we can refer to it in the personal management system. You know, so it'll be in both places. The most robust language being in the human capital management policy and then referenced in the personnel management system policy. So if you'll remember, you know, the language we have on substitutes and long-term substitutes and communicating and how much subs get paid and all that, that's all in the personnel management system. But it also talks about, you know, it has a whole section on, it says, you know, hiring of teachers. Refer to the human capital management policy. And then I think we should do the same for employee background screening. Refer to the human capital management policy.
That sounds like a good idea.
Okay. And then after that, this non-fraternization, and this kind of touches on something that came in with the new statute, and that is, you know, let's avoid situations where we have family members working for other family members type of thing.
Yeah.
If I may, I think that is included up in the other section.
Is it? Okay.
Let's go back up, Mariah, just very quickly.
Thank you, Lori, yeah.
It's okay. I do study these things in my sleep. And up, 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 up.
Oh, yeah, with the date.
Okay, yes, so it's under reassignment, layoff, and recall of certified and support staff.
Yeah, the last sentence there.
Right. No, yeah, that's part of the statute.
And as it's part of the new statute, you know, we're putting in that it applies to personnel decisions, you know, made prior to January 1st, or 31 December.
So this non-fraternization seems a little more meaty than what's up there in the layoff and recall.
Right, the non-fraternization is about relation, it's relational. Rather than, it's, you know, it's based on relationship, inappropriate relationship.
Behaviors, yeah.
And it's between employees and students.
Can we, no pun intended, marry the two?
Absolutely, yeah. And if you, we can even take this non-fraternization and make it less explicit, you know, and, yeah, merge it into the other. And then finally, just so that we have almost a complete cross-referencing between the two personnel policies, we have, you know, substitute staff procedures are very well laid out in the personnel management system policy. So what I'm suggesting is let's have a heading in the human capital management policy pointing to the personnel management.
Yes, excellent, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so what I'll do, Polly, is I'll take the action to basically add this language, maybe soften up the non-fraternization, add it to reassignment, layoff, and recall section.
Yep.
Place it as recommended, do the cross-referencing, and then provide you and Ed with updated versions of both policies.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
We did it.
All right. So Carolyn, does that cover the personal management system as well? All of your edits for that were in there as well, right?
Yes, they were.
All right, great. We're moving right along. Employee contract template.
So this is something that at the last meeting or the meeting before, it was talked about, just kind of running this through the policy subcommittee. It has to be brought to the full committee.
Yep.
And Sean, I might need you to back me up on this, but I think that it has to be approved by the committee, but it's not a first read, second read. You know, it's not a typical policy approval.
Yep.
But it does have to go through the full committee. And it was the preference of the subcommittee that it be run through them in advance because of all of the policy development that's going on for the new statute and that this is referenced within the policies that we're working on. You know, like we say, you know, in accordance with and to be reviewed by the school committee. So that's why it's here on your agenda tonight. The purpose is to have a draft to be placed on the school committee meeting. And I believe, and Sean can back me up, that it would have to be approved by the school committee.
Yes, that's absolutely correct. It's kind of occupying this weird space where it's really policy connected in the sense of all the changes that are occurring right now with ed reform. At the same time, it's not, as you can see, not really a policy per se. So you would be adopting a template contract, whether it's for all administrative positions or particular administrative positions, and that would have to go to the school committee. And it does make a great deal of sense to have it come before the policy committee just because it's so intertwined with the changes that are ongoing, and it's brought on because of the ed reform changes.
Right, we agree.
Yep. This is a totally new document, right, that you created?
Yeah, yep. And what I did, Polly, is I just looked at all of your administrative contracts that you have right now, looked at every single section, and basically just built this giant contract with every single section and every single contract.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Awesome. So we'll just, will that be part of the attachments of the next agenda? Or will they go out earlier for people, will it go out earlier for people to review?
It depends on how many changes that, you know, if the policy subcommittee wants changes to it. Or if you're happy with the way it reads now, then you can, you know, then Mariah will have the version that's going to be attached. But if you want more work done on it...
So I did look at this earlier, and it looks fine to me, my layman eyes. Could this be another one that we send to Ed just to have his eyeballs on it and then share it with the rest of the committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the version that I have was from our prior meeting, and I had comments on section seven and eight. Were those comments, were any changes made to those sections?
Yes, since the last meeting, Sean, per your suggestions, section eight was tweaked.
Okay.
And section seven I left alone because you had a comment that, you know, unless otherwise directed or however you wrote it. And I remember section seven, a lot of time and attention went into that prior. So, but section eight, you know, I did take your comments and incorporated them.
Perfect, thank you.
And Sean, thank you for that feedback.
Section eight does look good, and I do appreciate, you know, section seven, having a lot of time put into it. So, you know, I'll have some additional feedback about that probably before either the next school committee meeting or if this comes back before the policy committee.
It's kind of several policies, you know, the best of each.
Right.
It really is everything in the kitchen thing. But it works, but I like your feedback regarding every now and then, less is more.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, is this, this termination portion of the contract, is that in your current administrative contracts, as is?
Yes.
Okay.
Polly, would you like this on another subcommittee meeting to be sure that you and Ed have a discussion about it prior?
Sure, especially since Sean's going to take a look at section seven again. That way, yeah, we're not, well, we have, we're going to have another meeting before. Next week, so yes, sure, that makes sense, definitely.
Sean, John Anderson wrote the most current ones, superintendent and IT director.
Okay. Good to know.
And I would imagine he also wrote HR coordinator? Yep.
All right, excellent.
Thank you, Carolyn, awesome.
A lot of work.
Oh, the only other thing I would add, actually, now, of course, as you took the document away, this light bulb comes on. Just perhaps a clause that if the agreement is silent as to certain, anything really, the school committee policy will control. And that was my feeling, like in terms of the evaluation and the previous language, kind of running through exactly how an evaluation would occur. You know, there are changes that happen from time to time, and the school committee policy might change. I don't think you necessarily want to tie your hands to a contract when, you know, you want to be able to evaluate people best on base practice, best practices, and that might change from time to time and not necessarily on a contractual schedule. Now, I'm only focusing on evaluations because that's one of the areas that I had stuck on. But in terms of other areas that may be silent on certain things, it may be good just, again, to say that if the contract is silent on certain things, and school committee policy speaks to it, then school committee control, school committee policy controls. I just throw that out there for your consideration.
Right, the evaluation of the IT director and HR director fall under the superintendent. Yeah, I think we need to think about that a bit, Sean.
Good.
I think the superintendent should select the appraisal. Because as you said, it does change. Exemplars change sometimes as a state directive or the professional association.
Right, and again, it doesn't necessarily have to be related to evaluations. It could be professional development meetings and conferences. If, you know, if something changes with the school committee policy where there's, you know, a requirement that individuals go to more professional development, perhaps you want to have some flexibility there. So it says, okay, you agreed to this contract that says you have a certain requirement based on school committee policy. Or if it's silent, school committee policy controls. And if a school committee policy says three PD sessions a year, just throwing that out as an example, then that's what the requirement will be.
Okay. That works definitely. It gives the school committee agency when the contract is silent.
Sean, if I may, are you thinking of that as a global comment to the contract, to the contract template or specific to this one section?
Yeah, I was thinking more global.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right, maybe we can have some kind of intro language.
Yeah, that's not about it. I can think about it a little bit more and see what the best language would be and where to put it that makes most sense. You know, intro being one of those areas that jumps out as an area that...
Yeah, maybe we could add it right to the, for that sentence there, pursuant to the policies. You know, just add where this contract template is silent, school committee policy will prevail.
Because there, in section two, it spelled out salary range and annual increases to be determined in accordance with school committee policy. So when that, so I guess it would be understood if that, if whatever section it is, there's nothing in there, so. Okay, we're arguing in a circle. But I guess we could just copy and paste that, you know, just in accordance with school committee policy.
And we don't even need that terms slash notes. That was just for discussion. I just left those in, so.
But we could sort of plop that somewhere.
Right, right. We could say that, what Sean is saying, and then if we look at section three certifications, well, I mean, obviously, each position is going to have different requirements.
And that's set by the state. So, yeah. So I see, yeah. I like Sean's suggestion.
So Sean, were you comfortable with Carolyn's wording? And she'll find a place to stick that in. And maybe when she sends us her, sends this draft for Ed to look at it as well, she can put that wording in there and send it to you also? Does that sound like a good plan?
That sounds like a great plan.
Okay, awesome. Perfect. Thank you. I can't write and take notes at the same time, so, sorry. Human resource director's compensation policy. Did you put this together, Carolyn?
Not well enough.
I'm providing oversight.
So in an email with Ed on agenda items... this, he suggested that we have separate contract or compensation policies for the principal, the IT director, and the HR director. So I started with the principal that, you know, Ed had developed and had kind of been through a first read already and modified it slightly for IT and HR.
Okay.
Yep.
And this is the first read, right? Yes, it would be the first read. Yeah, I think, I, I think this is fine with me as well, but can we add this to the list to go to Ed as well too? Just as, otherwise, otherwise he'll bring all his edits and complaints to the school committee meeting. So we might as well hash it out in a policy meeting and give him a looksee first. Next, technology director's compensation policy. So same thing, I assume you, you took the principal and the HR and just tweaked it to
Yeah.
mimic those. Yep. Great. Yep, looks good.
Okay.
Creation of a policy that would designate responsibility in case of an emergency. Any, I did not come up with any wording for this policy. Did Ed send anything? In or anyone come up with any wording for this policy? I can't hear you, Lori, you're on mute.
I would assume the word incapacitated will be somewhere in the policy. We're in the middle of a pandemic with a runaway virus, so this is the best time to come up with that.
I have a little bit on my plate anyways, but I would love to volunteer to help out with that. I am in the middle of trying to write my own cybersecurity incident response policy to cover us on the tech side of things too, a lot of ways they tie together. I just happened to have this sitting next to me because I was going through a box of all my old paperwork though. I also got FEMA certified in the incident response system. And it's actually a pretty interesting kind of way of organizing and responding into an emergency. So I could, I could definitely help out with that if anybody wants it.
Yeah, Jonathan, you and I spoke about that about a month ago when we were doing the infectious diseases that we definitely need, the infectious diseases emergency response plan component that we definitely need one for IT. You shouldn't have to do that alone. Do you want to roll someone in?
No, definitely, definitely. But, but we're kind of working on a draft right now.
Okay, good.
And we have a lot of other resources. It's a very hot topic right now, so that's, we have a lot to pull from.
That can go into the ERP and we'll convene that committee maybe in a month or so.
There must be other districts with some kind of emergency policy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So maybe we could get a couple of templates for next time too. Or if you guys, whatever, however it works, easy for you.
Yeah, it's up there, yeah.
Okay.
Sean might have some policies.
Have, have any of you uncovered any emergency policy? Or come across one recently? So I actually can't, I can't think of, at least my understanding of what you're, what you're trying to accomplish. I can't think of one off the top of my head from another district. Trying to pull up a few right now to see if I, if I can.
Are there any in Board Doc? We have access to that entire database.
Right, that I, that I don't know how to search.
I'll search that right now.
Mariah can do that right now. Thank you, Mariah.
Jonathan, are you part of our Little Compton, I think it's called Meds team?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Well, so my whole, my whole family is. Jeremy and I have been for several years and my kids have trained. You are as well, okay. I was just thinking that Jonathan would be a good addition to that because of, you know, any kind of tech issues that arise when we're trying to get information in and out or whatever. So.
I agree. Go for it. John Anderson is the person, Sean, who told us that we really need to get a policy that covers all of central administration, superintendent, HR, business manager, and IT.
And so this essentially is what, what if superintendent is unavailable for some reason?
Exactly. Or the IT director or the HR. Because we wear so many hats in this small district, we each wear a lot of hats, that we have so many dashboards at our disposal and someone would need access. I mean, I think it was on 12 dashboards in the past four days between CRP and Ride Map and eCir Ride and eRide and a personal data management collection, all of it. We definitely, I don't have an assistant superintendent, Carolyn doesn't have an assistant, Jonathan doesn't. So we have no one, we have no way to really centralize anybody either. So this is the beginning.
I would also like to touch base with Ed because I feel like he might have said he was going to take a stab at the beginning of this policy.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, so, you know, that, I'm sure tonight when he gets home, he will touch base with someone. So whoever it is, if we can just ask him if he has a beginning to this, just so we know where he's coming from, if he's put a lot of work into this or not.
And I wonder if John Anderson crafted one for Charahoe. I think he was thinking of Charahoe.
Hmm, I looked there, I don't see anything published, but I'll track him down.
This is definitely his suggestion and he suggested this before the pandemic.
Okay.
I want to say there's a template somewhere on Ryan's website. I'm looking for it.
There's got to be something.
It was crazy long, like 300 pages, but.
Well. But John, this is definitely coming from John Anderson and I absolutely agree. Especially during ski season. Like would get knocked out. It's happened. But no, no, I mean, for any one of us, actually.
You know Patrick will be sitting at your desk barking out orders.
Getting those soccer nets. Yep.
Yeah.
Soccer nets.
Pickleball.
Um, so that's it.
The only thing I've found within Board Docs is a lot of references to sick leave. And it's a possibility that within those documents, there is reference to plans, but I haven't found it yet.
Yeah. Sean, it might be worth your while to check in with John Anderson.
I will.
It definitely is his, you know, his idea and timely, very timely.
Polly, could I mention one unrelated thing, maybe under topics for agendas? We have flipped the switch and gone live with Board Docs or policies.
Wow.
Exciting. Yes, so that means that every school committee member can log into Board Docs and see all policies in draft form. So for example, as I'm working on the personnel policies, I could email you and Ed and say, login, there they are, go check them out.
Are those the policies that are to the right when I logged in? There seems to be a list of policies over there, yeah.
Yeah, what Mariah has been doing is, is featuring the ones that the policy committee is working on for easy access. But the entire policy manual is now available through Board Docs. So if you were to go to the school's website and click on school policies and procedures, it would launch Board Docs. So, and Mariah and I are working on the best ways to present this screen in such a way that people realize that they're looking at not only the place to go for all school committee meetings, but also for all school department policies.
Okay.
So, and this is what we will be printing out and putting in all of the places that Sean mentioned, the, you know, at the school and at the public library.
Yep.
So you can go into any section here and look at any policy. And if you don't want, if you don't know what section a policy is in, and I've been using this all the time, you can go up and search. So if you're looking for the food services policy, you would just, you know, type it in and it would pop up. So there it is.
So is, is what you're saying is you'd like to be a spotlight on excellence and do a little demonstration for everybody?
I think Mariah would love to do that.
Board Docs and Parent Square, you know, two dashboards that we rolled out this year. They are game changers. I would say the Little Compton School Department is ahead of the curve. I'm not going to put Sean on the spot, but I'm sure he would agree. You know, doesn't matter how small our district is, we still have the same amount of policies as, you know, a metropolitan area. So this is just a real game changer when it comes to full transparency, ready reference, search, you know, keyword searchable. It's amazing. It's a librarian's dream.
Very nice.
So Carolyn and Mariah woo-wooed. All I have to do is pay the bills, but man, this is, I love it. Absolutely love it.
Yeah, yeah. So that was done yesterday. So we're very excited and.
Flip that switch?
Yeah, so Polly, as you're, if you have any trouble navigating or if, you know, you, you think of some way to make it easier for the public to view access, just let us know and we'll keep tweaking.
Okay, and I do think this is worth at least a mention on a future agenda. Whether we want to do a tutorial or a quick tutorial or even just a mention, whatever, everyone feels comfortable is fine, but.
Sure.
Yeah, great idea, Polly. Because I think everyone knew we were using it for agendas and so forth, but behind the scenes work was, was, was the policy component. And I don't think we ever underscored that because we weren't ready to flip the switch. And it felt, it felt good, given the green light yesterday for that.
It looks like the big guy has spoken and it's going to be on the agenda.
Well, he loves Board Docs. He's told me a number of times that it's his most favorite thing. He's most proud of this Board Doc.
He likes to just look at the agenda on there and not have all that extra paper.
Oh, he doesn't want printouts. No, it's, it's all.
Save the trees, yep.
Yeah.
But he wasn't an early adopter, so I'm so proud of him.
You, you may be missing some sarcasm, Lori.
Oh, I get it. Oh, oh, okay. Okay, so, well, I want to.
Mariah gave it away.
He's an adopter now because it is, it, everything is centralized, everything is organized, everything is accessible by the public.
We should have him give the tutorial.
Ooh, there you go. Yeah, and what I love is that the school committee members can go in and see the drafts. So they can see the policies under construction, being worked on. You know, if they're like, where do we stand on? You can look and, oh, that's right, we're in the first read, the second read, oh, you know.
And I think that's great if it, there's a policy that really interests them that they can check it out and even, you know, send their concerns to you or Mariah saying, oh, you know, I really had a concern about, you know, we have cheese sandwich written in our food service policy and I don't want that there. Can you pass that on? Or, you know, whatever it may be. And it would, it would save some back and forth and additional meetings too. So.
Good point. Touche.
Excellent. Has anyone heard from Ed? Is he close to being back? Should we stall or should we wrap up?
We did tell him not to hurry back due to the circumstances that he shared, you know.
Yeah, no, I would hate to adjourn and him be like, you know, oh, here I am. And we've already laughed after he raced home, but otherwise we can just adjourn. If there's, there's no public here, right? No one has any questions? Patrick, you have any questions? You're the public here.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Well, if no one has anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I don't know who's going to make it, but. At 6:47? Oh, in favor? Sure.
So Polly, was that you made the motion?
Yes, I guess. I don't know if that's allowed, but that's.
Are we adjourned now? Is this being taped?
It is recorded, yes.
I thought Carolyn said we weren't recording our subcommittee.
I'm happy to do whatever you want. It is recorded right now, but I.
That's fine. That's absolutely fine.
Two meetings ago, it was requested that I start recording them, so I have been recording them, but I can do whatever you'd like.
So Sean, what happens when out of the two policy, the two committee members, only one is there? I can make a motion, but can I second?
Well, first off, I, with my understanding that everyone who's here with the exception of Patrick as a member of the public was a member appointed to this policy subcommittee, am I wrong in that understanding? Yes.
Yes, I think so. Yeah, it's a school committee, subcommittee with two school committee members on it. I don't know if this helps or not, right or wrong. In the past, Polly, in this situation, I've noted in the minutes that committee member Alan adjourned the meeting at 6:47. And because the attendance shows that, you know, you are the only school committee member present, it made sense. But Sean, if you advise differently.
No, I, I think for today's purposes, that's, that's fine. I mean, it's, it's a bit odd because technically like if you were to go off of like a Roberts rules, you know, you need a, you need a quorum to hold a, hold a meeting. And I was, I was under the impression that the superintendent and yourself were also members of the committee. I don't know why I have that in my head if that's not correct, but.
Is that, is that how it is in some districts?
That's how it is in just about all districts, but that's not what we walked into, Sean.
Okay.
So we can do that moving forward.
Yeah, maybe I'll change that for the next agenda. I'll just appoint Lori and Mariah and Carolyn.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's probably a, a smart move. Just in case someone is absent, you can still carry on the business of the subcommittee without being hamstrung by that one person not being there, one out of two.
So can I just, so can I just announce that? I don't have to put it on the agenda? I can just appoint people.
I think you want to. I'm not a lawyer, never mind.
I'm not familiar with the school committee rules. I'm, so if, if the school committee rules grant the chairperson the authority to appoint two committees, which is quite often the case, then you certainly can just have that as an agenda item and then utilize that authority to do so. If it requires a vote, then you just have a vote.
All right, can we get Sean the Little Compton bylaws so he can study up on those until he has them memorized? We're going to send those to you. You can fill those if you want when you read them.
Um, yeah, Patrick, I, I can't remember what other committees you've appointed, but I think you've always had it under, I don't know, discussion items or whatever, and you've just appointed them with no vote. But certainly there was some heads up on the agenda that you were doing.
Yeah, you always did it at the organizational meeting, Patrick.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's a practice that Patrick and Polly inherited, that the school committee members, you know, were front and center. you know, were, were front and center on the subcommittees, but, and we would sort of ad hoc, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do that next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, but just, just for purposes of, you know, one of the school committee members not making it, or whatever.
Yeah.
And we're still following, and Mariah can't be appointed because she is in a, a different capacity.
Not a pointer at large.
Okay.
I just made that up.
We're all lawyers. He's going to be there anyway. He has to be there. But not necessarily a, a member of the committee.
Awesome. So I, I guess I will adjourn the meeting now, so that, that was all official. All right, at 6:52?
Okay.
All right, thank you all for coming. Bye, everyone, stay safe.
Thank you.